Okay, we'll call the Nisswa City Council Budget Workshop for Tuesday, September seventeenth, the order. First item on the agenda, item B. Twenty twenty twenty-five budget and twenty twenty-four. Pay twenty twenty-five preliminary levy presentation, okay?
Thank you, Mary, and good evening, members of the council. Tonight is an important night for the council as regards with regards to decisions about our twenty twenty-five budget and specifically our twenty twenty-five levy. So our preliminary levy tonight can be the maximum levy that is set for the upcoming years. So as we've discussed, the council can lower the levy between now and December before the final is adopted. But we will tonight need direction from the city council on what you would like to set the preliminary levy at. We will do that formally at the regular meeting. But conversation can happen at the workshop, give some direction consensus from the council on what you'd like to see from that. And then we will plan to have that ready for the regular meeting. The workshop agenda here is provided for you. I will spend my time going through the first three items in a little more detail, but information has been provided to you in your packet from different departments regarding the conversations that were had at the last budget workshop. So if you have questions on those items or want to talk about them, we surely can. If that helps you with decision making throughout our conversation tonight. So just let me know if there are things within those three items under number four that you would like to discuss in more detail. We always do a quick check on the CPI index. It's been pretty steady throughout the year for the first eight months, so we're at two point six percent through August. Included in your packet and on the screen is an updated new items list from departments just based off of feedback that the council shared with staff at the August workshop. So a few items have been adjusted from this list. I did remove the intern program with the Pequot Lake School District from the budget.
Can we put that back in?
That certainly up to council, I didn't get feedback, good or bad, and just trying to think through how to how to make the budget work where possible, but certainly that's something if you're interested in, we can talk about some more or.
Which which line item was that?
The first one on the new items list, the intern program, the three thousand dollar item. And maybe as I'll just go through and certainly as a council, if you want to, at the end of that, you can discuss as a whole, if there are things you would like to include or not include, different than what we have reflected up here for changes. Parks and Rec will remove the replacement of the maintenance garage roof. We will keep an eye on that and hopefully with a little more planning work that's ongoing with the parks improvements that we're working on, we can see if we can incorporate more of a larger plan into that before spending the money to replace the garage roof. And then in Public Works, we will, we have reduced the number of new pickup trucks from two to one, and then we'll schedule the second truck in the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-six. For sewer, we will move the lift station one panel to lift station seven to twenty twenty-six, that's not a general fund impact item, but just planning wise, we'll try to keep that budget as low as possible as well with the other with the other items. Here's another way to look at the new budget items kind of by category, as we talked about last month, wages and benefits, our capital improvement plan, the growth and that investment reinvestment in that plan is continuing. Some small increase for utilities, insurance things, other other similar items to that effect. So we have included those kind of top bucket items. And then the other items listed below are sort of those newer items from the other sheet, the one-off things and where you don't see percentages is because those purchases are rolled into our capital improvement plan. So it's not as if necessarily that's the amount of cash outlay from the plan in a given year. But because they're new items, it's important for the council to be aware of that. So they're included on the cost, but don't necessarily have a direct impact to the levy because the capital improvement plan is a is a bigger system that we have in place. With that, I will pause for a moment and see if if there if there's any other feedback like Mark suggested with items specifically that you would like to see or not see, or I can continue and we can circle back at the end, but I will just take a moment. Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
Let's well, yeah, we'll keep we'll keep going, just just pause when 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 you.
Do you want to talk about these quick? I mean, the one Mark brought up, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to hearing about. And then I would actually put the three thousand back in for that, but remove the fifteen thousand for that software package.
The software package was something we planned, what was that all about? Can you explain that?
So the idea with that is talking about trying to make our department operations more efficient based on the staffing levels that we have. This kind of stemmed primarily from feedback from our former city planner saying departments of one have a real challenge in managing a lot of the processes because one person has to do all of it, and so how do we make their jobs more efficient and streamline the experience for the customer, the public, so that we can digitize more of that and make that electronic? So in order to do that, the the first step would be to update our website because that would be the hub of then future growth with planning and zoning, community development, software modules, agenda, management, software packets, things like that. This would coordinate and integrate with our codification program that we're already using. So we would integrate all of those systems, and so we'd have to take a phased approach and say, let's do this one first, this one second. So the website would need to come first. There are two modules in the administration department, so those both don't necessarily have to happen initially. But the website would have to come first in order for planning and zoning to then be able to implement and court and connect with that, if that makes sense. Those are both items I think that can be pared down, we just haven't quite got there yet, working on the details with that, so I think those are high estimates, ballparks. But certainly if you wanted to just focus on the website and not the agenda packet modules, that would allow success for planning and zoning in twenty-five.
Have we got any bids or quotes on the website work for maybe?
The website from Civic Plus, who would, that's the integration module so that then all of that could feed off of that, that's that's about half, it's about seventy-five hundred of the fifteen, so they're about half and half cost.
And that's something we've been discussing prior to this, too, I mean, to help out.
So one of the issues that has constantly been brought up by some of the members of the council has been that planning and zoning doesn't work at the speed at a speed business, it doesn't work efficiently and effectively, and it's been a constant, you know, and it's always trying to figure out how we do that. And I know that Bethany was had looked at this program, I believe she had worked with this program before, hasn't she?
Not this one, but I did get feedback on this, that this would achieve those goals that she had given us feedback on.
I would say with that, that really wouldn't have to do with a program, that would have to do with a timeline on, you know, filing right now for two months out. You know, a couple of years ago, the filing deadline got changed with planning and zoning. And that is the biggest hindrance that doesn't work for business and planning zoning is the long duration that you have to file to get on the agenda, the timeline's too far out.
What do you think? You're the liaison for planning and zoning?
I mean, I think that there's a pretty solid process that we have in place. You know, from my recollection of discussion with Bethany in the past on that, not having the opportunity to talk with Steve about it yet, it has been a desire. Above and beyond that, I mean, they're doing, she was, and now Steve will be doing the best and timely process, people get that pushed through. I mean, even for a permit for my my home that I'll be building here shortly, they push it in and through very, very quick, so.
Yeah, but a home permit is different than like a like a building permit, so Steve's, you know, for, you know, here, but like right now, let's say a business wanted to do something in downtown. You know, we'd be looking at the November meeting right now here in September to try and get on in November, December. And that timeframe is too long with the shorter summer, that's what this rule just changed a couple of years ago, this it always hasn't been like this, I don't know when the change happened, two, maybe three years ago on this timeline, correct, Jenny? That it got pushed out? It's it's been a real short amount of time.
Had to think about that, yeah, it was extended just to allow time to review and to determine if it's a complete application or not.
So I guess, you know, kind of pertaining to this, but that's the biggest factor to go back to the old timeline that helped the businesses out the most.
A system like this would allow would say, let's just say for an example, that there's five items required for an application submission for planning commission. It's going to list all five and you're going to have to put in documents for all five, so if you don't, as the applicant, you know that you're not complete. So part of that is now currently a lot of things get submitted and it takes somebody to review it before then it's saying it's not complete, and then you do the back and forth thing. So that does also create a little bit of.
So would this program help with that timeline to remove to move that back to what the previous states were up until a couple of years ago? Is would that be one of the goals of this program? Because if that would be one of the goals, then yes, but if that's not going to be the goal, then no.
The goal of the program is to make the department more efficient, correct?
One of the goals, and certainly we could we could evaluate it for that and look at it specifically that way, I don't really think we we have done that yet, but that's a good question and could could see if that would be helpful because that makes things more efficient for both sides, so yes.
Who currently puts the agenda packets together for planning and zoning?
The city planner. City planner. So if the council is inclined to keep that in for now, again, still placeholders as we move forward that process, we can evaluate it for that and give some feedback after the fact.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to know that information before I made a decision because we do need to speed that process up, and if software would help, sure, then I'd be for it. But if we're not going to speed that process up for businesses, then what are we doing with the software? What's the motivation?
Has the canoe city planner had a chance to review the information about the software and stuff and whatnot?
I've shared, gosh, I don't even know if he's here, did I send that software information to you? So quick video, just to highlight what that looks like, so no, we haven't spent time diving into it, but I did share the this is kind of something we're talking about, certainly want your feedback when you're ready.
I would be in favor of leaving it in there for now and then have encourage council members to talk with the city planner about it and get educated on it to see if it's what what staff's idea, staff staff's opinion is. If they can do with one module and not the other one right now, great, if there's then we can make a decision better, you can we can all make a better decision if we have a chance to talk with staff, what works for them, because staff, you know, want to give staff the tools they need if we can. And, you know, I know we've been talking about this for more than a year about trying to speed that process. Make her more efficient. So I would leave it in for now, me personally.
Right.
I was just gonna say for the packet and agenda software to like Kiki does council packets, Amber does park, like maybe to get their feedback on if they think that would be valuable, save them time or costs.
Those would be usable for all department packets, yeah.
Do either one of them have an opinion on it or have looked at it?
No, we have not gotten that far with that yet, so certainly those are opportunities as well, yes.
So I think the idea that it sounds to me like leave it in for now.
Okay.
But, you know.
More more feedback and evaluation.
The intern, I'd like to put that back in. I just think it would be good for us, it'd be good to get younger people somewhat interested into how city works, and that's why they're out there, but that's just me.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, I don't think it's a for the dollar amount, I don't think it's a bad thing to introduce today's youth to stuff.
Jesse, John, Bruce?
That allowed point one five percent to the levy.
Point one five? Three, yeah, okay, I see where you're coming from. I was doing it backwards the other way, sorry.
If nothing else, the I'd like to see it left in there, you know, the three thousand dollars.
We could leave it in for now, yeah, if we decide we got to cut later. Well, it can't come out of reserves if it's being budgeted in.
Right, but if it gets eliminated from the budget.
Could always do something along that line, yeah. Get program going, see how it works.
Okay, can do. I will continue, do you have something?
Can I go down the list?
Of course, of course, yes, I didn't know how how much we wanted to go through it, so please.
No, I just wanted to ask Chief Taylor with the are there any funds anywhere that can be used for the shed that you which is needed?
I'm gonna request that the shed be taken off.
You want it off?
Yeah, you can take it off. We'll make other arrangements and I will be all right.
You sure?
Sure, that we should, can we negotiate with my other stuff?
No, 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 I just I was just wondering if there are other ways we could get the shed done.
In an effort of goodwill, I'll take it up.
I got a question, can we back up going in order with planning zoning, the code enforcement module? Can somebody speak to the code enforcement?
So it's all it's all combined into what they call community development, so it's permitting, it's code enforcement, it's just it's it's a way to manage property activity all in one.
Before we do code enforcement, though, aren't we going to need somebody licensed in the city for code enforcement?
So this would just be violations, any sort of issue that comes up would be how we how we organize and deal with, we have violations now we deal with, we would keep that more housed within a software program. So when somebody puts a deck too close to the lake, kind of a thing, you know, that's how you would navigate through that through the software instead of just in paper. So not building codes.
I understand all that, currently the city doesn't have anybody licensed from the state level to enforce any codes.
Building codes, correct, so that's what we're talking about. Code enforcement is just violations of city ordinances. Anything, so we'll go down the line, anything parks and rec related questions for Amber?
The new retaining wall or the boulder wall in the pocket park?
Yes.
Has anybody talked to MinDOT about that? That was Tom has.
Come up since.
Talked to one of the guys about some paving work that we're having doing unrelated, but he's gonna get with their higher ups and find somebody who can give us some estimates on the repairs at the pocket park.
Yeah, my thing would be, I guess, I would see about reaching out to MinDOT when that was originally installed. It wasn't installed per plans to what the city had. First wall fell over on site, almost hit the individual standing there when that happened. And that number is not a realistic number to replace those walls. So I guess maybe I would put that one on hold till we can have more conversation in the rest of the council that doesn't know the full backstory with that would get up to speed because I understand that it was all park or whatever, but when that happened, you know, Tom, you were here. Most of the other people in the room maybe weren't, but I think it'd be a conversation to have with them, in my opinion. It was it was never put in correctly from the get going, that was well documented, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, when I look at the wall, now I can't speak to it for specifics exactly, but I do recall that it does show something about rock, the bigger boulders with the landscape fabric and that P rock behind it, and that could have even been a change order, too, I'm not positive about that, but.
Well, if you're starting all, if we're starting from scratch with it, then now, I mean, that's
Right.
You're talking, yeah.
That that number's not going to be accurate.
No, hell no.
It was it was complex, it'd be hard to.
So are we just starting?
So that here, I think.
Well, I think there's several things going on, so one, we have the downtown master plan that's investigating Pocket Park as well. We have it from the up top, the road aspect, if there's something from Tom's budget, curb, road things, signs, things like that, all playing a role with the downtown master plan. And then if we take it out of the budget, we're waiting a whole year to have funds to do anything. And so I don't disagree, I didn't know any of that about MinDOT and what happened then, so we should certainly investigate some of that stuff and the plans. But we're looking at it from multiple angles right now, and so we don't think it's going to cover the whole repair. But at this time to have some money set aside for twenty twenty-five, if we do need to do something, that gives us a little bit more time to investigate it and let it some of these other things play out.
My guess, too, is typically when we have projects like this with another agency, there's going to be some kind of maintenance agreement that usually leaves the local with the responsibility, but we will look into if there are agreements and what they say and see if there's any coordination that we can have with MinDOT, but yeah, I don't think the intent was to fix or just the whole thing, it was if there's an immediate issue, we need to solve and make sure it doesn't become worse, that's what this was for.
How soon can we get something back from MinDOT, or do you think yourself, yeah, looking into the initial construction, what it what the contract said, et cetera, what are we responsible for, et cetera?
We can reach out to MinDOT tomorrow and see if they'll easily be able to come up with the documents, and then we can also search on our end. I mean, I don't think it would take too long to at least find whatever final paperwork there was for the project to see who's left with what to deal with.
There were several special council meetings dealing with that at that time, too, to look at.
Well, I know MinDOT never wanted it there in the first place. That was a city request. Okay, so what do we want to do? Do we want to just leave it in there for now? Do we want to pull it? People want to do, I mean, again, this is another thing that, you know, want to look at it and then and give your feedback back to the city administrator and the department head that's responsible for it, and then they can go from there before we have to make a final decision. Remember, once this preliminary levy is set, we can't raise it.
My personal opinion would be, you know, for what we're doing with that and talking about it, the quote, I think the decimal points, just even in the wrong space on that for getting that repaired, I think that we're by six figures. And so I don't know what the point to leaving it is when we're just taking a stab and it'd be my belief that we're so far off on our numbers, and I think that would eventually be a project that we'd maybe have to look at even with Sourcewell or some other grant or some other funding or state money or county money or seeing who could partner with us on that if we're going to truly repair that. That'd be my belief on it. That we're just a little ahead of the game, I mean, it's not that big a number, but I don't think that we're even close to accurate.
That was truly Minnesota, foreigner transportation?
Yeah, they did it, they turned it over, but I mean, those walls going in, they were actually supposed to be masonry. They were supposed to be terrace different, the backfill was supposed to be different, it got all filled with pea gravel, wasn't supposed to be filled with pea gravel. I mean, I was the contractor on the site doing the plants, the original wall that fell in over when we brought it there to their attention, it literally tipped over as MinDOT, the architect, engineer and stuff, they almost got taken out the kneecaps when it fell over the first time by the other contractor, I don't know, you end up hiring some contractor to put all those walls and stuff in. And so there's there's a lot of background information there that all of you need to be up to speed on, because it's it's if we go after that as a city, I'll tell you right now, it's opening a huge can of worms that you all know nothing about.
Joe, I just want to clarify, so I think what Amber has money in the budget for, and what I'm talking about is just this little short one right by Big Axe.
Right, where the water blows over and doesn't go into the ditch, yeah.
Not the bigger one in the center. Is that what you're talking about or?
No, I'm talking about all that hand dry stacked rock walls and like where it blew over there. That was originally supposed to be a drain put in there, and it didn't, they put that scour stop, it's an erosion product down that ditch, if you dig underneath it, you're gonna find it's an engineered erosion mat, it's been growing over and covered over, are you familiar with that product? Yeah, that was kind of a a last minute change, but a ditch and curb and all that was supposed to be put in there that wasn't to stop that water from going over there at Big Axe. And so, yeah, if you dig up the original plans and we start to look what was supposed to be done, and then what wasn't, like I say, there are several council meetings here with it, it's very well documented, it's back when Lauren Winkelman was here, obviously, and and stuff, but that was all supposed to be different, didn't look anything like it does today. And now those were the plans that were drawn up, approved by the city, and it was an onsite switch by the landscape architect out of the metro, I can't remember the exact place at the time, but what we got and what we were trying to get for maintenance are two different things, and like I say, we're opening a can of worms, even in that, even with that wall, so little background.
What do we, so that we're talking that's short wall, right, Tom?
Right.
Yeah.
But even all those pavers are supposed to be impervious, they're currently plugged and filled, that whole thing's not working properly, it's never been vacuumed, never been cleaned properly, the whole, the whole, the whole thing's failing.
So if the city, if if Parks and Rec has to do something, where do they pull that money from then if we pull this out?
I am just suggesting that
wondering.
I'm just suggesting that the council look at this as a whole and help Parks and Rec out because this is such a bigger issue, I believe, than just Parks and Rec and a lot of engineering that needs going, and and we'd need WSN's help with this and stuff. I'm just saying it's it's a much bigger project than what meets the eye. So.
Well, what you're describing, it sounds like it might end up being a standalone bond, actually, to fix it.
Correct.
Possibly.
Okay, I, I'm in favor of removing it for the time being until we have greater clarity as to, uh, this is news to me.
Right.
And I appreciate it. I, I, I did not know this and, uh,
Yeah. People to look it up.
If we remove that, we're now under seventeen, just by quick.
I have no problem removing it. And if we have to revisit anything that's going to be in there, then we may have to give Amber the funds to do what she needs to do out of unallocated, just so we're aware. Um, cause if something does fall apart that has to get put back together, even temporarily, we're going to need to do it. So, but the city can do it and not affect her budget, fine. So Bruce, you want to pull that one out? You want to pull that one? You want to pull that out? And then the new records, uh, new record counties, the record system, I understand that we're actually going to get it. The chief's going to get a grant for that. But we have to put it in there. So we pay for it upfront and then he'll get reimbursed for that once it's all up and running.
We can't net the two from a, from an accounting perspective. So we have to show the expense. We have now added the twenty thousand in revenues into the budget. We didn't have that last month. So both are accounted for and in there now. Still, it's just a new addition. That's just why it's here. It's required, but.
Do we have to include it on this levy? Or would we be able to pay for that upfront out of the reserve fund? So we can try to keep this percentage down.
Yeah.
Thoughts on that?
Thank you. That was my next.
Sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
So not included in the budget at all?
Correct.
Okay. We can include it in the budget, but it doesn't need to be added to the.
I mean, right now it's basically net, almost net zero. Twenty thousand in revenue, twenty one thousand in expenditure.
Correct. However, that's, it's still being reflected on the, on the levy percentage, correct?
Yes.
So for public optics, would we be able to remove that line? Maybe do a ledger adjustment?
If you just don't want a budget for it, knowing it's coming and we're, we just will have an addition in our budget next year and on unanticipated cost, even though we're going to anticipate it. I mean,
So we're gonna have, so this is going to be what we're paying every year.
Roughly, yes, I think so.
I'm sure it'll might adjust up or down, whatever. Okay. Okay.
But yeah, you're saying it's coming in, going out. Why add it?
Well, specifically.
It's gonna have to be added next year anyway.
Right. But specifically for this go around right now, if we were to remove that from, from this levy.
Yeah.
I think you get my point, right Jenny?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, traditionally, I would say, what does it matter? But we have another public optics on this.
Sure.
Cause the higher that this thing is. Looking at the percentage increases for the past ten years.
Yep.
This blows them out of the water. Don Jacobson would be very unhappy with us. So if we're, i- if we're all understanding what that is, it would be then an added budget item for twenty twenty six consideration. Knowing that we have this one time covered. Okay. I'm in favor of doing that. It'll decrease that percentage amount by.
Not quite one percent.
Uh, point seven five.
Mark, what do you think?
I'm fine with that. We'll just have to roll it in twenty twenty six.
Well, for clarification, not roll to twenty twenty six, the, the first accrued cost that we'll have, that's not being covered by Sourcewell Grant will be in twenty twenty six.
Yeah, there's no choice in twenty twenty six.
Right.
Right. It is a have to. Yep.
Um, going over everything else that I have and Tom, appreciate the, the feedback that you provided to us somewhere here. Thank you. I don't have any more items on public works that I would consider removing. He, he's got the new pickup trucks. Uh, the two of them moved and it's down to one. And then again, sewer was moved to twenty twenty six. So I I don't see anything else on my end for suggestions of axing sadly. Think the backend is the new budget expenditure items are what they are, so.
I guess my only question, other question on any of the items is that, do we have other funding sources that we could, you know, nick some of these things off with? And I would just ask staff to look through their budgets, look through their, what they have. What can they, what can they take off of here? Because you know, the public is getting tired of large levy increases.
We also do look to this time of year, start to see if there's any spending we could do out of current budget that we haven't spent to offset and remove from future. So we do start that now, this time of year after summer. And if there are smaller things we can, we can do to help minimize the impact. We, we certainly do that. So we will, we will make an effort to, to do that too.
Question, have we looked into any of the contract work for mowing or part-time work and seen how those numbers affect or are these lawn mowers too that you need for snow removal and stuff in the winter time? Or how does, how does that work? You know?
So they are set up for winter work too. There, I think if you see in the memo there, I, I lay out that they're set up with a snow blower and a broom. And they're used in the hockey rink and on the sidewalks. Um, but we buy that equipment below the cost most contractors can buy it at. So I'm curious how anybody would come in here and honestly price mowing cheaper when we do it and do it as good a job.
Yeah, it's just a question. It seems like there's a thousand lawn mowing services out there right now and and with added extra self-help, you add the labor and then the extra truck or trailer on there. So it's not just the lawnmower. It's, you know, moving them around town, all that combined expense for that. Just looking at, seeing if an outside source would come in there. I mean, I don't know. I'm just looking at other big things, um. A lot of other places have gone to some of that contract stuff, cause, cause of that. But I don't know if that's an option or not, or something we want to look at, just however we can save money, I guess.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, from, from my point of view, the, the mowing is pretty widespread. And like, for instance, in the cemetery, there's also some, I would say it's a sensitive area to mow. I don't want some of the lawn services I've seen operating around town wa- working out there. Uh, we also have some sensitive areas that they would have to access, for instance, at the sewer ponds, so. It would create at least short term more work for us, I think, than just staying where we're at. You know, labor wise, we, we hired people for about the same money that they do, I believe. Uh, we're using seasonal staff that aren't paid benefits. So hourly, I don't see how we're paying any different. Our equipment, like I said, is less, our gas, we pay the same or less. Yeah, we have a pickup to move it around, but they'd have to have that too. They're not going to drive a lawnmower from the waste department out to here, so. I mean, we do contract some things out. For instance, I point out that fertilization and spraying, we've contracted that out. So there are things that we do contract out. It's not that we don't look at that, but I think when we're trying to get tens of thousands of dollars out of a budget, I don't think we're going to get that out of switching how we mow the lawns, so.
Sure.
I have no problem with the, the way we're doing it now. I think our staff does a good job. And the nice thing about it is if something comes up, there's always, they're always able to jump in and come in and take care of it. And I think that's been the experience I've seen around town. Is public works and the parks department work together. One mower goes down, another, they don't, they, they're just, you know, they just help each other out. And I think it flows really good. You're not necessarily going to get that out of a contracted service. They're going to come in once a week, maybe twice a week, whatever you contract for. And if you need something between those two times, you may probably not going to get it. Um, that's been my experience working with contracted mowing services. And the one that I worked with is exceptional. But they're just busy. The good ones are busy. They, so.
I, I'm not saying I'm closed minded to the idea. I just I have a hard time seeing it or benefit us to, to go there, so.
Jenny, where does that put us for our levy presented right now?
I haven't been tallying. I was hoping maybe you were.
Well, I thought I was, but now I'm looking, now I'm looking at the backside of this page.
I mean, we're probably.
Twenty, 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 twenty-five budget expenditure new items. Total on here is fourteen point three two. Now going back to the other sheet you gave us with the historical levy data. Currently, the percentage increase right now is that on the sheet, it says seventeen point six five.
So levy revenue.
Correct.
Expenditures side. So they're not, oh, they're not going to always be the same. So it's the revenues we need to generate to cover our budget. Um, sometimes so in twenty four, we did have one time money that we didn't get again in twenty five. So we have to account for not having that revenue from twenty four to twenty five. So there's other variables that come into that, which is why that doesn't always align. So I'm thinking quick math. I mean, you're probably at two percent less, at least maybe two and a half, based on the things we've taken, taken off so far.
So do you have a list of what those other revenues or that are coming forward somewhere?
Other, well, general, we just have general fund revenues. So fees for services, charges for, um, you know, planning and zoning fees, cemetery fees, other revenues we bring in. We get small revenues from the state for various things, minor things. So we roll all that together, interest income, miscellaneous revenues, roll all that together. And then the difference between that and what our expenditure budget is, is what we levy for.
Correct. Do you know what that dollar amount was last year?
Um, that was, I could look, I, I want to say was about seven hundred and fifteen thousand, I mean, around. And it's a little bit less this year. I, I could, I could look. I don't think I have detail.
Do you see it somewhere? I don't see that number.
No, it's not. Cause the revenues here are just total general fund revenues. You know, at some point, it's just so much information I'm trying to focus on. High level, big picture type thing.
You don't say. So I, I've been subtracting from, I've been subtracting.
Seven ninety-four. My apologies. Seven ninety-four is our general fund revenues for twenty-five. That's just my slide. To break it down. So the three, seven, nine, eight matches the three, seven, nine, eight on this summary sheet you have. So we take that general fund levy, we bring it down, and then we add our debt service levy numbers upcoming for the year. You will notice that I have a bond listed for twenty twenty-four for our property bond. I don't have a twenty twenty-five road bond listed. I cannot levy for a bond that's not going to be issued in this calendar year. So that will be a twenty-five bond. Um, I will maybe quickly walk the council through just a couple of things with respect to bonding. So you have kind of a preview of what's going on there. Um, but that, that top half there will show you. So that shows you the breakdown. So the seven ninety-four is what we bring in and charges for services and other things throughout the year. And that difference is the property tax levy. And that four million, one thousand sixty-nine dollars should be what you see on your levy sheet for the seventeen point six five percent.
Okay. So essentially the levy percentage before we did anything, that's seventeen point six five. That's what we're reducing down from. That's what I've been.
That's where we're reducing from.
Plus or minus basis point or two. Uh, sixteen point one five.
Okay.
Which puts us at a ten year high.
Yes. So here on that, that sheet, the council has here on the screen, so um, shows that seventeen point six five as of when we put this together. And then it does have the breakdown because a good portion of that is attributable to that land purchase bond that we are issuing. So there's a breakdown between the general fund levy and our debt service levy, um, to get to that seventeen point six. If we're right around sixteen at this point. Um, that will only improve these next couple of slides. So we look at our tax impact model using that seventeen point six five. So the numbers would be less at sixteen percent. But just to walk the council and the public again through this, if you look at a two hundred thousand dollar value home at the seventeen point six five, it would be sixty-six dollars in increased taxes for the city portion. That's not the total tax bill, but just for the city portion. So that would be a little bit less if that was sixteen. And then for a four hundred thousand dollar home, that seventeen point six five translates into a hundred and forty-five dollars in new tax due for my homestead property.
What is the county amount at again? It was surprisingly lower.
I don't know, actually.
Well, we talked about it last meeting.
They were three point something, I thought.
Anybody know?
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you have any more, uh, or homestead value on average in the city of Nisswa, I believe, on that model that we got from?
The county, the board of appeal?
Yeah. What, what was that average homestead value in the city of Nisswa? I thought it was like five sixty-one or something off the top of my head.
So you could look at that. I mean, if you just, we could just go with six hundred thousand if, and so if we looked at the sheet, that would be two hundred and twenty-six dollars. At the seventeen point six five. So it would be less at sixteen percent. Quickly, I will walk the council just through some upcoming information on bonds. I think it's good information for you to have. And then I think the council should take a few minutes and determine if the sixteen percent's where you want to be or if you have other ideas, certainly. So um, just to walk through the sequence of what will be likely upcoming. Certainly there are things here that the council will still need to approve in the next couple of years. But in November of this year, we are moving forward towards the land purchase acquisition and issuance of an abatement bond, uh, for that purchase. We are um, also incorporating the, a geo capital improvement bond for the city hall improvements that we are working towards, um, completion. So those will both happen together in November. Then in July is when we would plan to issue the road improvement bond for twenty twenty-five. Um, the contractor would have been awarded the project. Things would be moving and in place. Typically, July is when we typically see a first pay request application. And so we are wanting to align um, obtaining the bond proceeds at the time when we would need to start spending that money. So we don't incur the capital costs, uh, interest costs before too soon, then we need to do that. That would then be incorporated into the twenty twenty-six levy. Pickle building is still to be determined as far as, um, timing, but I think we're looking towards um, just over a year from now to potentially issue a revenue bond to build um, a new building. A lot of things come into play between now and then. Um, lift station one rebuild and lift station twelve, looking at trying to coordinate those projects for efficiency. Um, just based on the type of contractor we would need. And look at once, assuming the land acquisition process is complete in November, then looking to say, how do we develop the roads that are needed within that property so that that property is ready for resale to private developers? So the city can sell the land we don't need. So we'd be working next year to then put in place uh, potentially both of those projects to get that going. And because of the timing with those projects, then the question becomes, can we still accomplish a road bond in twenty-six? Or do we need to, um, push that into twenty-seven? So we're talking about that internally. We've been talking with city engineer. Um, timing, we don't have the goal like trail included in here as well. So it's another major project. So trying to align the projects and the timing uh, with capacity and bonding and all of those things. Just want to give you a heads up on some of the vision, the idea for moving forward. Certainly more conversations we will have. Just want to give you a heads up on some of the vision, the idea for moving forward, certainly more conversations we will have, uh, about that, but. Just to, just to give you a feel for the next couple of years, there's a lot to get done. High level, yes, um, high level budget, um, with respect to this sheet, I did, because of the slide prior. Um, I did pull out debt service. Revenues and expenditures from the general fund, so it makes more sense to do that, I know our auditors, when they do our financials, they end up pulling that out anyways, so. This is just specific to the general fund, the budget itself increases around nine percent. But it's a balanced budget, which is also, um, a goal of ours each year. And then the debt service fund, I have separated out and identified here, um, we are levying for both. A twenty twenty five and twenty six amount in twenty five, because we have to have that cash on hand. Before February of twenty six, so there's a timing thing that's happening there. We go into our enterprise funds. Certainly can answer questions, um, with staff that's here and our non-major funds. With that, we've talked a lot about, um, some of the council questions and thoughts on budget specific items, so I appreciate that, so very helpful. Um, some of the guiding questions I just included in my memo for you to think about. Reduction in budgets, I think we've accomplished that with some of the new budget requests. Um, increase in revenues, talking about if there's opportunities to do that. Um, and then I did pose an idea to the council, just for your consideration, if we consider alternating budget requests from departments. Um, just to minimize the number of things coming forward each year, saves staff time potentially too. Just an idea, trying to make the budgeting process a little bit easier, um, but with that, I will. Pause there and leave it to council for discussion, feedback and or. Final decision on what you'd like the preliminary levy to be.
Given the timeframe we have left, we better start discussing what we want our preliminary levy to be.
Can you go back to that slide with the numbers on one of the first ones there? Uh, no, the, the kind of high level one.
This one?
Hmm, one more.
You tell me, I'll just.
Sure, that one would be fine.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Real quick for Tom with the road improvements, right, because. As the government, we're here to provide roads and streets and stuff, so that has to be a priority. What is the set timeline to keep on our rotation schedule? Is that twenty seven? Does that jive with what you know?
It can, what, what way we've had it set up is, we're trying to keep all the roads on a thirty year rotation. They had been on a forty year, so we're shrinking that some mostly because forty years is unreasonable, it's, roads just won't last that long, so. Everything, uh, we're set to about seven years, if we go one year shorter or one year longer to make it fit a budget cycle. Or say we had a spike in asphalt prices or something, it's okay to be a one year, one way or another. Uh, my biggest concern probably are some of the roads in the twenty six or twenty seven bond. Um, are in really tough shape and. Pushing them out any further. Some of them should be paved now, like, for instance, the roads through Grandview are pretty rough, if you're familiar with that, so.
Right.
So I would, I certainly wouldn't push it out further than twenty seven if we can avoid it.
And we did talk about some interim solutions, we just might need to. Consider that for some very specific needs, but yes.
Is the grant money showing up there in the city hall number? Is that taking into consideration the stuff with Sourcewell?
Um, this is just. As we're working towards an actual final cost, this is an estimate, it. Won't, it shouldn't exceed that, but, um, that's just the ballpark that we're working with, so. We won't issue anything more than we need once we get that final amount and then, um, incorporate this Sourcewell grant into that final number.
So for final levy. Or initial levy for, that we have to decide on coming up here in the next meeting. I don't know where everyone's at, where, you know, I know we, we can see we dropped it from sixteen point seven five or six five already. Seventeen point six five, roughly sixteen point one five, is that what we figured, okay. Um, again, remember, broken record, but we can't raise it once we've. We can only lower it, so, um, I don't know where everyone's thinking, what they think they want to do. Um, Mark, any ideas, your, your feedback?
No feedback at this time.
Okay. Any idea what number you're thinking of, Bruce?
I guess this is the first budget meeting I've been at, so I'm kind of new to this.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I'm, uh. You know, I'm, I could, I don't like the idea setting it at sixteen. But that's where I would, I wouldn't go any higher than that, it's going to mean some more cutting. But there are still things that we can, other, other things we can do, you know. If the departments have money left over and they can make some of these purchases they want, or some of these purchases are one offs. And we have other monies that we can use, or if we need to draw from unreserved for something smaller. You know, maybe we can do that, but, um, there's, you know, I just. Um, that's my two cents, sixteen would be as high as I could go, and I'd like to see it a lot lower than that. When we do our final cut, but then we have time, staff has time. And we have time to educate ourselves with staff and go in and talk with them and see what we can do. So, that's where I'm at, Jesse.
Proceed with the preliminary six, sixteen point one five, plus or minus.
What did we set the preliminary at last year?
Well, Jesse and I were the only ones here, so I think we set it at nineteen and it came in at twelve.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it was eighteen, nineteen.
It was very high.
It was very high because.
We heard on the side because of we. There was a few council members that were not here at that time, so we heard on the high side to be able to make sure that. Their voices were heard, there was a lot of backlash from that, but we got over it. This is the number that Brent is going to publicize, and, uh, this is, this is what we're going to be questioned on, so. I encourage everybody here to be confident. In leaving the next couple of minutes before the council meeting, that this is something that you are comfortable with. Explaining and defending. So, and I actually, I'll, I'll put an asterisk to that, it's, it's not that, I don't think any of us are comfortable with it, but we understand the economics. Circumstances that we're in and that have been bestowed upon the city from a macro sense, so it's not exactly that we have options. Look at the total market value of this. What is it, nineteen square mile, eighteen square mile town of ours, one point one billion, are you kidding me? Come on.
So.
Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to set it that high, um. And then, you know, going through, we have the list in front of us, so what we're going to cut over the next couple of months, and so. You know.
Sixteen one?
What's that?
Sixteen, sixteen one and whatever, what was it you said?
Sixteen.
Not going to be exact, but roughly sixteen point one five is what I have for my chicken scratch.
I concur.
Yes, my question back to everybody. Does people have an overall goal? Do we want to try and match what we were last year or whatever over the next couple of months, so? You know?
I don't think you're going to see a reduction like last year.
No.
It's not going to happen, there's too many factors against us. Um, part of it is the investment we've made, um, in staff and in wages and, and. Things, part of it is, uh, infrastructural things that we're doing, part of it is. Not an insignificant part of it is the bonding that we have to do, I mean, uh, we're there. I, I don't think we're gonna, we're, we're not, we're not going to be able to get down to nine percent. For example, I just, I, I hate to say that. I don't know how we do that.
Jenny, our floor is eleven point one four percent, is that not correct?
Floor are four, there's.
The levy increase.
There's no floor. I mean.
I'm factoring in what we have for the wages and benefits, the capital improvement plan, and then utilities, insurance, and other. Two hundred seventy eight thousand.
Oh, I, I see where you're going with that, I mean, it doesn't fa- you know, that doesn't factor in the reductions in the budget that. That we've experienced, so the budget, the general fund budget at this point is increasing overall by nine percent. Because we have reductions, we have additions, I just highlighted the additions.
Summary by category.
Well, basically, if we cut everything, except what we can. Is what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah, see, that's. I'll be the dirty person, do we just say seventeen? Or I mean sixteen, sorry, sixteen one or?
Sixteen point one five. If anybody else has any other suggestion, I don't.
Sixteen point one five?
Yes, that's what I come to.
That's what we'll vote on in the next meeting. In, within thirty seconds. Or whenever Kiki gets a rewind.
Yeah, we, you can take a minute or two break if you need, but.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. So. We will adjourn, I'll may take a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then we will take a break until we can.
I so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.